Call this meeting the common council order, roll call please.
Oliver McCros, here.
Horn?
Here.
Byer?
Here.
Peachey?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Tully?
Here.
Thank you. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium, state your name and address and reason for appearing. So you know one. Move on to number three, a status update on the Walmart Real Estate Business Trust versus the City of Jefferson.
Just a really quick update. I think you probably caught got this in your last packet, but you know Walmart's appealing their 2019 property assessment. When they're at board review, they basically waive their right to appear in front of you, so they filed with a certain court. The only thing I want to let you know is that our insurance company is afforded legal coverage, so that is not much when issued. Pretty good offer, and that will defend the same. They've responded to the initial complaint, and at some point in time, you know, there'll be a scheduling conference or a hearing set, but generally these things, I'd say nine out of ten times, the ones I've been involved in, they're always negotiated outside of court. And I'm guessing that may be something that might get me this one.
I'm not the only community that's facing this.
Oh, no, oh, no.
This is what's commonly known as the big box loophole.
Yeah.
Correct?
This is the big box loophole.
Sorry, dark story. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Move on to number four then, a status update on the Elizabeth Street Extension.
Just wanted to make the council aware that we are currently out to bid for the Elizabeth Street Extension. This is part of the Rock River Landing project. We are not bidding the entire street at this point. Essentially, all we're doing is the utility portion, trying to get those in in 2019. That essentially involves sanitary services, water main and services, and storm sort. That bid is due next Wednesday, and we're hoping to be able to make a recommendation for award following council meeting. So you'll learn more of that council meeting, see how that, if we're able to get interested bidders, but that's currently on request, and bid through our A Smith.
Any questions, Bill? Just like to pass along and hand that the city did a great job on the restoration of North Watertown Avenue, where the street opening was, and as well as the new crossroads. That's a very positive comment. Thank you.
Very much looking forward to the Elizabeth Street, which is an unknown area here. A lot of talk, well, people are asking a lot of questions, but what's really good, however it is, I'm very happy to do it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to proposed ordinance number eight dash nineteen, an ordinance to repeal or replace section two seventy, dash one, parent E of the municipal code concerning sales in public right-of-way. Oliver, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, citizens of Jefferson, council members. Proposed ordinance eight dash nineteen, the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, hereby ordains as follows. Section one, section two seventy, dash one, parent E, sales in public right-of-way is hereby repealed in its entirety and amended to include the following subsection two seventy, dash one, parent E. This section does not apply to the following events: farmer's market, the meat and kite days, Autumn Fest, Holiday Parade of Lights, Santa House Hours, and National Night Out. This ordinance shall take effect after passage and publication and attestation as required by law. This is the second reading, I so move.
It's been moved, sir, second.
Will we follow discussion?
Yes, absolutely. It's been seconded for discussion? No. Discussion?
Were there any events there that we would like to either delete or add? Because Autumn Fest, it's not, has not occurred in recent years, and is there any event we'd like to add? Such as Gold Fest and the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the.
Must be the Rib Fest.
Yeah.
The, uh, Huaydos had the carnival just recently. Um, they have street closure and, uh, looking at sales in public right-of-way. Can, is there a way, uh, to the attorney, that we can call it a civics event, or some other generic name, or is it?
Yeah, first of all, I think it should be civic events and civic organizations. But just to have something real broad and vague, saying civic events, I'm uncomfortable with that. I think we should be as specific as possible. But if you want to add those things, motion to amend the meeting that's before the council right now would be in order.
Does that mean they're going to, uh, so they're involved for what, 200 years now, I suppose, or a lot with, uh, Chamber of Commerce and a few other places? Autumn Fest, I don't know if that's something, I don't think we really did that thing, which, have they ever feeling on that?
I would say that, I know that, um, talking with the chamber, there has been some requests from businesses. I don't know if it's necessarily called Autumn Fest anymore, what it was, but they had talked about it, so I don't think necessarily, um, delete it at this point, only to have to move it back in. I don't think it works to leave it in.
Great.
Does this, does this motion approve allowing someone to buy?
No. So, these are just exempt by ordinance.
So if the Rib Fest wants to go on there just to buy?
Yeah, just.
But they'd have to pay at least, and vendors don't have to pay.
These specify. Yeah, that's right. These are the ones that are exempt.
So this is exemption.
I would.
That includes the Jefferson Live Music Foundation?
Broth sale, CPA broth sale? Would that be included, or are you guys specifically?
Pay for us.
Well, yeah, we have the option to include it in this group or not. Uh, that, you know, the great groups of, you know, the, the city, and, you know, events downtown, so that's our option to decide who's included in this group and who's, uh, to get permitted for you.
So if you so choose, would choose, perhaps you may want to consider inserting the word civic in between following events, if it doesn't give the, just to.
Following civic events?
Following civic events, and add any other, those other ones that you would mention, if you so choose.
Do civic events as approved by council?
No, no, and just civic would modify events and insert it right before events.
And then if you want to add Rib Fest or Gold Fest or some other things that are recognized civic events, now would be the time to make that.
So do you want it?
Chris, would it be possible to write the ordinance in a way that, um, in the future, if events are added, they could be added by resolution?
No. No. The only way to amend an ordinance is to pass another ordinance. Can't do by resolution.
You couldn't do as approved by couns-, or as approved by council?
That'd be too big. I'd be very uncomfortable doing it that way.
Well, then, we're gonna do it, so we're gonna do it for whatever events seem appropriate tonight, to make it easier on Chris or Sarah.
Sarah.
Whatever.
I know Jefferson Live Music Foundation would be one that would certainly.
Sorry, yeah, I totally stand and supported that, Rib Fest, uh, Gold Fest, um, those three, that I would like added to that list to put her in mind, the, I'm not sure if it's one or the other. Can I really think of any others that they might include for up there? I think they're all great for the city, make downtown events.
What is the sale in the right-of-way aspect of Santa House Hours? I just, I mean, I looked at this and.
I think yours is a goal, I think.
Couple of things that stepped out or jumped out to me was Autumn Fest hasn't been public in the last few years, and I just don't know what would be pulling up sale of goods in the right-of-way for Santa House Hours.
I know, I know last year, the, uh, the chamber moved Santa House indoors. I don't know what their plan is for this year.
But they're not selling anything but the telephones. This is about sale, sales in public right-of-way.
They may do in the future, so.
Do they have to have?
Chocolate candy cans?
Yeah, do they have to have, you know, if they just give them to the, uh, just.
No, they, they would have to be selling that.
Okay.
So, so are you looking for a list that we may want to include at this person?
Do you wish to offer amendment to this list, or do you wish to ignore this list as presented?
I think if we're gonna add to it deserving, then let's get it done right the first time, so I would, do I need, I need to propose an amendment?
To the motion.
To the motion to add the Gold Fest, Jefferson Live Music Foundation, um, pre-tracked, we can re-track Autumn Fest? Leave it in there.
What do you leave it?
Leave it in there.
Maybe this should be tabled and told us in the national, because we've heard talking about Fest, National Night, so.
Fest.
We're talking a lot of different organizations and adding things. Uh, we'll just do that tonight.
I'm just.
Listen while on our.
I don't disagree there, because we might be missing some stuff.
I'm just wondering if we should have, like, a segment that just says, nonprofit civic, nonprofit topic civic organization, so that we don't miss any of that. You know, if we have, like, if Kwanis comes up with a nonprofit event in the future, but we, we don't know what yet, getting coming.
Do they sell anything at the car show they do that run through all this? Burgers, so, so they probably want to include it.
We, I mean, we want the nonprofit civic organizations, I mean, that's what I think we're trying to help, that's what we're trying, essentially that's what we're trying to find.
Again, as I said before, that's pretty big.
I think they're talking about the, uh.
Yeah. Maybe I, maybe I don't have information, somebody can tell me about some of the, uh, water ones. I'm just talking about the ones that we're familiar with right now, if there's more that pop up inside. I'm not, we want to make this very specific right now, Ron Tag, and, of course, we'll see if it can help us out with that, so.
I, I tend to agree with Ron, to table it, to come up with a full list, or.
Those affected, potentially affected.
Do it right the first time.
So you're aware to, Tim has the authority to waive it, that's built into the ordinance, so if you guys did happen to miss one event, Tim does have that authority to waive it, that's what you did for us, National Night, obviously, and we built that into the ordinance on purpose, so not to try and serve anybody's.
Lot of pressure over there.
Yeah, that's right.
Just so you know.
So we'll entertain either a motion to table, motion to approve, or a motion to amend.
I make a motion to table, do we have further information of other civic organizations to add to the list?
Seconded.
It's been moved, seconded table, further discussion. So are the, the ones that have been mentioned here tonight, Gold Fest, Jefferson Live Music Foundation, Rib Fest, and Red Fest?
I think they'll.
Under consideration.
I think they'll.
We're looking to see if there's any other to get to.
Right, right.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I, I, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of tabling, uh, roll call vote, please signify by saying ayes, sir, calls your name, or if opposed.
Oliver McCorn.
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
McCros?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Thank you. And I guess we probably offer to any other nonprofits that feel that they have an advantage of the civic nature to make that home in the council between now and today. Okay. Proposed ordinance number nine dash nineteen, an ordinance to amend section two seventy, two sixty-five, dash four concerning winter parking. Oliver and Randall, please.
Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson ordinance nine dash nineteen, an ordinance to amend two sixty-five, four concerning winter parking, section one. Part F two sixty-five, four shall be amended as follows. Two sixty-five, four, parking restrictions. A, winter parking. On all streets in the city from December first through March thirty-first, parking shall be permitted from six P M. daily and shall be in effect until five fifty-nine P M. the following day, twenty-four hours. On even calendar days, vehicles shall park on the even side of the street, which has even house numbers until six P M. On odd calendar days, vehicles shall park on the odd side of the street, which has odd house numbers until six o'clock P M. After six o'clock P M. daily, vehicles shall be required to move to the alternate side of the street based on the following day's date. Excepting those, on those streets and areas where parking is prohibited between two o'clock A M. and six o'clock A M., or than a limited parking zone, which shall include designated thirty-minute, one-hour, and two-hour parking areas, between the hours of nine A M. and five P M., vehicles shall obey posted erected parking regulation signs. F, if any vehicle shall be parked in violation of these, of this subsection, the police department shall ticket the vehicle and may order it towed from the street at the owner's risk after the vehicle has been ticketed. The fine for violating this subsection shall be prescribed by the municipal court bond in effect, plus the towing charge of each occurrence. This ordinance shall take effect after passage and publication and attestation as required by law, as this is the first reading, no actions are credited by the council at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Oliver and Randall. Next one we'll add to our resolution number thirty-five, plans consent agenda, Oliver and Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City of Jefferson, resolution number thirty-five, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for September third, twenty nineteen, is hereby adopted. A, vouchers payable for August twenty nineteen in the amounts of two hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Payroll summary for August thirtieth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents. B, street closure of the one hundred block of East Milwaukee Street, September fifteenth, twenty nineteen. C, licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. Operators licenses, we had one, Veronica Mack at Bambi Club, two. And number two, special class B licenses, there were none. I would so move.
It's been moved, sir, second.
Second.
Seconded by Oliver and Byer, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying ayes, sir, calls your name, or if opposed.
Oliver and Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
McCros?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Hearing unanimously, thank you. Resolution number thirty-six, your resolution authorizing sewer main lining for South Marshall Avenue, Oliver and Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number thirty-six. Whereas the Jefferson Waste Water Utility and ATNT has authorized Terra Engineering and Construction Corporation to perform geared-in place pipe, known as CIPP, sewer lining to repair damage to a sewer main from an ATNT directional board project. And whereas the Jefferson Waste Water Utility has additional CIPP lining work that needs to be performed on South Marshall Street, and Terra Engineering and Construction Corporation has offered to perform additional work when they are in the city for the ATNT repair at a reduced cost. And whereas the Jefferson Waste Water Utility has money budgeted in its capital additions collection account for such work. And whereas the finance committee has reviewed, quote, from Terra Engineering and Construction Corporation, and concurs with the recommendation of the Waste Water Utility Superintendent to perform the CIPP lining work on South Marshall, and recommends the same to the common council. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein authorizes Terra Engineering and Construction Corporation to perform the CIPP sewer main lining of South Marshall Street for, for the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And be it further resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, that the city administrator is herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the City of Jefferson, following its review by the city attorney. I would so move.
It's been moved, sir, second. Seconded, seconded by Oliver and Horn, a discussion.
Todd, were there notable quotes on this?
No, because the work was just in addition to the, to the ATNT repair. The ATNT repair was twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty.
So, so more or less, change order?
Exactly.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I asked committee to answer, approve this, thought it was a really good idea, could use our money, because Todd explained that it saves us a lot of money down the line.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying ayes, sir, calls your name, or if opposed.
Oliver and Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
McCros?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Hearing unanimous, thank you. Next we'll move to a discussion around the reconstruction of Riverside Alley. Mr. Your friend, please.
Bill, you gonna queue us up there?
I'll come up.
You have an extra copy left, Bill? The, the question for you, and you'll ask this when we're done with the council presentation, is the reconstruction of Riverside Alley, a project that you would like us to pursue? And remember that's tied to that voluntary loan fund program close off that we have to the Department of Administration. We're at that point, now we're under the clock, we have so long to close that program out that, um, we really have to decide whether this is a project that you'd like us to, to tackle. Pardon? Yes. Well, I will tell you, I will tell you this, that it's extremely complicated. You gotta run it through the Department of, of Administration. There's an overhead electrical situation that no doubt the utility have to, would have to work through the Public Service Commission, but we'll kind of take you through that, and, and then we can discuss it, and you could provide some direction. Generally, we would start by just giving you the Reader's Digest version update of all the stuff we're trying to do in that portion of the community. We'll give you the latest update. Bill had mentioned up at the old Comby Highway Shop Maintenance Facility. Um, the goal is to get the utilities and the street cut in this fall. The rest will sit over the winter and we'll hit it out and try to complete the park and the Elizabeth Street Extension in twenty twenty. Uh, the foremost property conversion, that's well underway, actually pretty cool, if you have a chance to drive in there, they're putting in that lobby wall, and you can see a portion of it that they have constructed, but, um, I mean, you guys know we've talked about it enough, you know, that was an eighteen-month project that'll take through the end of twenty twenty before it's completed, but pretty cool. Um, Bill, why don't you give them a quick update on the Riverwalk extension, making foremost property of the.
Sure. Currently, the Riverwalk, uh, where extends, uh, up to the Milwaukee Street Pedestrian Bridge, um, the foremost project that Tim just talked about, uh, Riverwalk will extend through there as well. Pileings are going in right now on the formation of that Riverwalk, taking place a little bit. That leaves a gap between the Milwaukee Street Bridge and the Racine Street Bridge, and across from the old Rock Bottom. Uh, currently, what we have done is met with D N R officials last week, just to kind of get their pulse on what they thought of the project. Um, as you, just, as you guys have heard us talk in the past, we have talked about a board block concept to the west of the existing poles between the tracks and the river. Um, overall, the comments that we got from our D N R rep were favorable. Um, they had already talked to several departments, um, and at that point had not identified any red flags. Um, what they identified last week is over the course of last week and this week, they were gonna go ahead and talk to other departments to try to see if there were any red flags, and try to get back to us by the end of this week, I would anticipate, maybe in the next week. Um, if that was the case, and actually, one of the things that they asked is if we can make a liner for additional fishing access along that as well. We had proposed a E foot wide path, so if it moves forward, maybe a ten or twelve foot wide path along that as well. Uh, we also talked to them about potential funding opportunities, so we'll be looking at that as well. So, um, as of right now, the first conversation we had with them was pretty positive. We figured that was gonna probably be the biggest road block. I do also have, um, calls into U P and have those contacts of who are gonna need to go through there, but at this point, we think the D N R is probably gonna be the, uh, the one that we're gonna be looking at. What we're hoping is that the study that we're gonna have to do, uh, for the floodplain analysis, will not involve FEMA, but we won't know that. That's kind of step two or three down the line, we'll provide some additional updates, but, um, we are optimistic at this point that we can get through that process and still look for a two thousand-point construction.
Good. Um, I think Chris is maybe two weeks or less away from getting some position to close on the Rock Bottom, which we'll take, and simultaneously, we will close with the Rock Hills. Uh, we still would like, when we do have a design, to put that smaller parking lot on the property to the Rock, uh, Rock Bottom, to get that done yet this fall. Uh, and then lastly, that brings us to the topic of discussion, is whether or not we proceed with basically remaking Riverside Alley. So, um, just quickly, Bill will take you through the existing conditions of that alley.
I don't think any of these surprise anyone. Uh, these are photos I just took driving up and down the alley. Um, biggest concern on the alley, obviously, is the overhead utilities, um, and, uh, there are a number of services, um, there are, uh, other issues on the alley too, as far as, uh, right now it's a two-way alley, uh, we have pavement issues, we have some stormwater issues, uh, and, and we have, uh, businesses that we would hope if this alley is improved, would come along and, um, pave some of those back parking lots, very similar to what we did in Firehouse Alley. Um, I think that's a great representation of what, um, an alley went from, what it could be, and this would obviously be on a muscle or scale, uh, but overall, I think the intent here, especially with what we're going along the river, is to be able to improve the appearance and, um, use, uh, usefulness of that alley. So, um, these are just. So these are just several photos that I took, again, as I'm driving from Dodd Street up to Candice to identify the existing pools, overhead wire that we have down there. And I'm sure every one of us are well aware of what it looks like down in those areas.
I want you to run us through what you see as the fix.
Sure. This is kind of a project extent as we've identified. And what we've got is on the south side is Dodd Street, sixteen-foot wide alley extending up to Candice. The wider area on the north essentially is the public parking areas that's currently used for truck and trailer parking. Overhead electric and services to be buried underground on the Comby twenty-one pole between Candice Street and Dodd Street. With that, the underground electric and services will be reconnected with the individual properties. Sixteen-foot alley pavement will be pulverized and resurfaced. Streetscape improvements, including a bike and pedestrian lane, benches, ornamental plants, decorative lighting. Those items have not been fully designed at this point. We're only just in preliminary stages of identifying what we would anticipate to be able to do in those areas. We recommend making the alley change from a two-way to a one-way, more likely northbound. Parking lots at the north end will be resurfaced to allow public parking, identifying those in the project as making available to residents along Riverside Alley. So those are the project extents. I'm breaking this down by lot. Pretty much a lot of the things that we just talked about here. What I've identified in red is essentially the corridor that we'd be improving. The areas in blue are essentially parking lots that I've identified that we would certainly talk to the residents about, trying to, residents or business owners, to be able to come along and try to resurface those as well. As far as the descriptions, again, everything we just talked about with stormwater, streetscape, pavement modifications, overgrown, overhead underground. Between Milwaukee Street and Racine Street, it's a little bit different. This is the area of the Rock Bottom block. Again, we've got sixteen-foot alley here. We've got the parking lots that would certainly hope to be resurfaced. And then what I included on here is just a rough outline of parking lot that we are hoping to construct yet in 2019 on the old substation. This location, north of Rock Bottom. And then I'm showing a rough location of one of our borderwalk locations. So this is pretty critical block for us, I think, with what we have going on now and in the future.
Bill?
Yes?
I talk to Rob Lewis, if not daily, quite often. I know that there's probably a design, at least some collaboration between the parking between what the substation was deconstructed and his parking lot. I'm pretty familiar with the drainage issues there that exist in that parking lot. I know he's hoping that the drainage will be somehow addressed and drainage to go to the river, I guess, more easily because of all the mold damage and all the stuff that's been done in there. By no fault of the city, just because when it rains hard, water runs into that parking lot and runs right in the back door, runs right into this basement and stuff. I know he's concerned. He's talking about collaboration. I think it would be hoped the city, well, at least some cooperative efforts to solve that.
I've had multiple conversations with Mr. Lewis on this as well. What I'm showing right here is an upper-tier parking lot, essentially in the location of the substation. What I have, what we've also got laid out, what I have with me tonight, is a second parking lot on the backside of the old Rock Bottom. I'm well aware of the drainage issues there. What we're looking to... It is. And one of the things that we're looking to do is to be able to raid the upper parking lot, to be able to get that in. This will add about sixteen parking spaces in that location. Conversations that I discussed with Rob, and I'm going to continue to further discuss, is let's wait until the spring to see if any of his plans change in this area. What I don't want to do is put a parking lot in there and then say, I wish we went and done it this way because it affects the...
I didn't mean to suggest that we should pay for anything to, you know, help him out. I'm just saying that since we're going to try to fix up the whole thing, but at least keep the conversation open as to how we would to be a mutual benefit.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. And we're taking both those areas into consideration. So certainly, those lines of communication are open and having way with the conversation with Rob.
It's high energy. I think you have a lot of time.
Thanks, Walter. Moving on to the next block, essentially from the Racine Street to the public parking lot. Again, here we've identified a corridor, sixteen-foot alley. We've identified parking lots that hopefully will be resurfaced at owner's expenses. And this is the southern half of the parking lot behind Feltons that we would look at resurfacing as well, along with overhead underground again. The last block is the parking lot where the current trailer parking is, the sixteen-foot alley once again. Identified some parking lots, or a parking lot on the south side. Again, this is not a complete list by any means. It's because of the fact that we're in preliminary stages. It's just an idea to identify that there are additional points beyond the alley that could benefit from the improvements that hopefully determine this area into what we had done over on Firehouse Alley.
More discussion. We've created this on, but the parking lot we're looking at now, I totally get that that's public and I know we're going to have discussion whether or not. But I'm pretty sure if people have moved the common properties when that's fixed up, they're not going to want to see all the demolition duty cars, garbage that's been parked back there. So I don't need to displace them because they have to put their stuff somewhere, but we have a plan as to where we're going to move that area because, except right now, I'm through there ten, twenty times a day. And I know what's parked back there. That's not going to be a bad fit in the future. We're going to have to figure out what to do about that situation.
I believe that's a conversation we have to have. And to tell you the truth, it's probably a conversation that we should have regardless of the project being formed or not.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Just PD on that. But I agree with you. I think that we'll have to identify exactly the use of that parking lot, how it's identified, you know, if it's just overnight parking or whatever it is. But I think that's a discussion for council.
Yeah, at this point, I, you know, it's been that way for a lot of years, but it's been more blamed the way we've made with, like I said, junk cars through there every day, all that stuff sitting there. And with us trying to address both the foremost property, the government project, and clearing up the downtown, we're going to put that kind of time investment in the, yeah, I think we have to, even if we have to find a different spot for those people to go. I don't think that stuff is, you know, we can't stay there. We just can't.
I think it's conversational as to having at a certain point down the line.
Yep. Yeah. Before Bill runs you through the budget, these are the revolving numbers. When the city closes it all, make no mistake, the city will close all that program. That's a state of Wisconsin directive. We're really talking about the sum of seven hundred thousand dollars. And really, our numbers, we have about four hundred thousand dollars represented by cash that have been loans that have already been paid back. That's easy for us to deal with. We just write a check, give it back to the state. And then the existing loans we have outstanding are valued at about three hundred thousand dollars. The city will be writing a check to the state of Wisconsin, the Department of Administration. The city will continue to carry those loans, but they're defederalized, meaning there's no rules, there's no federal requirements. The city can do anything it wants with that money once the loans have been repaid. So seven hundred thousand dollars from one or two sources, either cash on hand or applying all the value of these loans, will go to Madison. They will bring that money back in the form of a one-time program. It's got to be a block grant, so we got to meet all the requirements of the federal government. But they will return that of that money to the city to undertake the project. So the sum is seven hundred thousand dollars. I will tell you, the Department of Administration will control this pretty tightly. You're going to have to go up to the DOA, sell them on the project, basically have them tell you that it's eligible and that you can proceed if you want to do that before you spend a whole bunch of money and effort looking at this. But Bill has just a budget he can run you through, so you know about what we're talking about. And keep in mind, it's all pre-engineered, so these numbers are going to change in a good part. At least I do think that's reliable.
I'm not going to go through these line item by line item, but some of the highlights, what we'll be looking at is all rising grading, compacting the existing asphalt surface essentially will be sixteen-foot wide for the length of the four blocks. We'd be putting down sensitive four inches of asphalt, typical of the city street for thickness because of the fact that we do get deliveries back into these areas. We also have trucks, John's trucks, in there once a week. We anticipate that we are going to have some issues with soil, so I've got an allowance in there. Again, the streetscape, we've not priced out individually, but we've put an allowance in there for what we've identified as benches, trees, whatever we else we want to come up with, basically decorative area to be able to make it inviting to the public in those areas. Stormwater allowance, we've already got a couple of areas that we've identified, we've got river drains that we want to try to tie in to the existing storm sewer. I've got parking lot grading in there, and that's areas to the north, one of Feltons in there, same thing with asphalt in those areas. Typical assumption of twenty percent for engineering costs. I included a ten percent contingency in there. Title work and surveying has already been spent at this point, or that work has been started, both by Fidelity and Art, or Softwood Survey. And I gave you guys an update at the last council meeting that at this point, we do not have any title issues that we cannot overcome. Tell me anything else you have there.
All right. Give them a whirl. Got anything?
The streetlights cost, I provided in a number from Jefferson Utilities, so we included that, eighty-eight thousand dollars estimated for a total estimated project at this point of $585,000. The, I have line item thirteen, utility cost, very over at mine, provided to the city by Jefferson Utilities. I believe the overall cost of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand is accurate, the number that we provided to us. So the overall project cost of all that twenty-two million, I think, is a beautiful box of dollars.
So let's do the last page and then we'll talk about it and get your pulse and you guys tell us what you'd like us to do. So I would say the next steps for us would be kind of as follows. The council authorizes the project, direct staff to proceed with project planning. That's tonight. The next step after that would be to meet with the Department of Administration and basically receive some type of preliminary authorization to proceed with this project and tie it to the closeout of our revolving home program. So we get the money coming back to the city. We get through that, then we have to survey the households that live along the length of the project because it's a block grant. We have to benefit the majority of lower and moderate income people. We think that probably exists by the people that live off of storefronts along the project route. If that is indeed the case, then I would think we would be at a point where the council would adopt an order correcting the utility to remove the overhead lines from the project area, based largely on the input from H2 and the fire issue. I've talked to both of them. Both would tell you, look you straight in the eye and say, that's a hazard down there, particularly on the fire end because you're not affecting the rescue if there's a problem in those buildings. You're not taking anybody out of the building on the alley side. And Ken, you told me your concerns with the poles, how tight it is down there, but you would rely on that. And I guess, once that would happen, that puts the utility, really, I think, in a little better position to deal with the Public Service Commission. And then they have to notice or deal with all the curators that have flashed to the polls, kind of way up and across the street of that line. In terms of a project construction period, I put 2020 to 2022. This is probably a project to minimize impact that you could do over two years. You could do south of the bridge one year and north of the bridge the next, or you could try to do it in one construction season. You know, it's kind of open-ended. But 2022 would be about the longest we have to have that money returned back to the city to be able to close out the program. Generally, I would tell you this, I, you know, I can tell you, I know how much damage this is personally, after all that clever company that's setting up for the community development, fire brain, and then we get sandboard and cements. And, no, I know what I'm getting the city in, into economists. I just want to, I want to tell you, their opinion is, quite frankly, to work with. But it is also a one-time opportunity to take that money. I wouldn't be confident, just knowing how things work, that if we didn't do this, that it would be a long time before that alley gets addressed because they would always compete against money to fix streets. And you'd be, you know, taking that, averting it to fix some streets. If not for this money, you're right. It could be a couple of years, it could be twenty years. Right. Right.
We did not send the survey out? I thought we were going to start with a survey to see if it met the requirements. So right now, we don't know if it's going to even meet the requirements for...
No, we're, we can assume. We are assuming, but we've not done that, Jim, as of this point.
The first thing we wanted to do was to get through the title work and the survey to see if there were going to be property boundary issues that would prevent us from even considering the project. We're through that now, so we've identified, we've identified that the project is viable from that standpoint.
So right now, it stands by whether the surveys come back that it's a low income, moderate income families will...
That is a requirement. That's the fifty percent.
So if that doesn't come through, then none of this comes through.
Yep. I just assume that to be the case.
I think there are, boy, I talked to a lot of people. There are taxpayers across the city from east to west, north to south, that probably don't quite understand what goes on downtown. But I think when I look at the Southwood Drive, and a lot of people that have seen some of this that may impact the city, it's kind of the biggest stuff we've done to the downtown area, and the longest lasting. So I'm all for it. And it may not impact me or my family, but I think if you look at it twenty to fifty years down the road, it will totally change downtown, just...
Are you thinking about it in the area?
No, I don't think about tomorrow or the next day or, you know, two years from now. But I think if we're talking about the future of Jefferson, it's a great project. And if we don't take advantage of it, like you said, it may not happen for a long, long time.
It's expensive. It'd be more expensive in five years. You know, I'd have to do something at some point, but that's really the deal. This is a bit like a marathon race. You know, we're at the start of the race and he'd ask you if you... ask you if you want to direct us to move this along. That's really what we're asking you tonight. And if the answer is no, we don't have to go on and try to find another project because I think to close out that program, the way I described, it's the most beneficial to the city. You just need a project that will benefit a low and moderate income portion of the city. And not the overall public benefit of the community.
I think it goes hand-in-hand with the Gorman requirements, what they have to rent to as well. I think that's what the DOA will see up in Madison, that fits hand-in-hand with that. And you can open up access to the park up on Elizabeth. That would serve all of it.
We want the park downtown.
It turns out half as good as Firehouse Alley, I think you could have a park.
I think it's something we got to do, and whether you live downtown or not, every time you go through this Racine Street Bridge, you see that. You see that, and if we can change that view, it's definitely, I think it's an excellent use of that noise.
Move forward. Let's start trying. I thought this is a great idea from the beginning, so I guess we've been talking about it a long time, and there's no harm in going forward at all. First steps here.
I don't think it was like maybe, because we probably won't find a really project easy to qualify this either. This is probably most likely the most eligible, so I think definitely ties everything else to doing downtown.
Absolutely, it's a great, great project, and once in a lifetime, and we do it now, and they'll remember us well in the future.
Oh.
Or what are you going to?
I didn't say that.
Yeah, do it. What is, we got the utilities here, what's the ramification for the $600,000 we have for utilities? Can you give us an idea how that's going to be covered?
I want to introduce Bruce Guthrie, he's our electrical consultant. He's been designing your infrastructure for almost 30 years, so we can answer that.
32.
Yeah, Bruce, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and just move that microphone over there so that people watch, you're excused.
Well, the utility shares in your excitement over this project. There's, I think, we all agree that we'd like to clean it up. The only thing I'd point out is that the Public Service Commission will determine what part of that $637,000 that we're shown there would be paid, would be used, would use ratepayer money to pay for, or what the balance would be paid for by the city. So that will shift. We're going to make an argument, of course, to put as much into the utility as possible. I made a call to the Public Service Commission, talking about a generic city, you know, that's not a far stretch, because there's a lot of cities who are cleaning up their downtown, making it more beautiful. And they had a quick answer that, you know, right off the bat, is the city pays for it. And then I started arguing this point and that point, and, you know, community related depreciation, and a host of arguments. And so in my, my letter, I said, I know that I could make an argument for 147,524 of that 637. Well, anyway, that could be paid for by the utilities. That would leave a balance of 500, well, I included the 88,000, so it's a little, just not shy of 500,000 of that 637,000 would be, could be potentially paid for by the city. I just thought you should know that. We're going to argue with the letters that Tim referenced, that perhaps more of it would be paid for by the utilities, will get as much as possible, but I, in the end, the Public Service Commission will make the ruling on it. So it's, we're all on the same team here in terms of when do they have this project go forward. Whatever the city has to pay, it's going to be paid for, it's a community effort, right? And either it's going to be paid for in your electric bill or in your tax bill. So as much of the grant as can be used for these purposes, and I, and I make the argument that a great deal of the cost for the utilities isn't those 21 poles that Bill mentioned, it's, it's the changes that you have to make to the back of buildings. Their electric service has to be changed for how it enters the building. You have to hire electricians to do that. That ties very closely to helping low and moderate income dwellers of those apartments. And it might, might work in the city's favor for some of those dollars. So I don't know how much the grant is, but I, I do know the electric utility part of it, and we'll argue as much as possible. In the end, the Public Service Commission will decide. And I don't know if that is concerning to any of you in terms of going forward with making inquiries. Tim laid out a very nice order here with the Public Service Commission being the last after we have a lot of information nailed down, so.
What do you think, you know, if it is a 637,000 or $500,000 bill to the city utility, what does that, how does that affect the rate payers? You know, what would that do to our effect, our rates, excuse me?
I didn't do a rate impact, Shannon, I don't know if you...
Yeah, so it will increase our, our rate, our plant base. So when we do rate increases, the Public Service Commission goes, look at our, that plant as a whole, and they determine the rates off that what we have to recover to replace all of that. In addition, it will increase our depreciation cost, and it will increase our pilot payment back to the city immediately. The next impacts will be one per rate case, this will affect our rates.
Any idea on the percentage of the dollar per household?
No idea.
It's a huge variable. I'm not, I don't need to dominate it, it's a percent. It could have some effect, it's all we know.
Correct.
I mean, I don't want to get down the road here where everything comes through, yes, we can do this, we can do this, except for, you know, half of it, the 700,000 are giving us back, 637,000 comes back to the, you know, the citizens, rate payers. That's going to be a hard pill to swallow. So that's, that is my biggest concern. Otherwise, I agree, this is a great opportunity to do this, use this money. You're looking at 522,000 out of 700. Can you use the other, you know, 178,000? Can that be used towards the utilities? I don't know.
That was one of the discussions that we had, that we would look at, consider using the portion of those, that CDVG funds to be able to contribute to possibly the connections off the back of residences or something like that, be able to contribute a portion of it, just.
If we bring it down to 500, and then we take another 180 off of that, you know, then you're only looking at, what, 200? So I think it's a good plan. I'd like to see us go ahead with it. We've been pushing for it for how many months now? I'd actually thought the survey had been done, that we were at that point, but the only thing that concerns me is the utilities portion of it. That's going to affect the rate payers.
The, the Public Service Commission, when they look at this, they look at the fairness issue, they have to be everyone the same, but they also look at your ability to pay. So the, the rate impact will be considered by the Public Service Commission in determining how much is allocated to rate payers. I'd like to say they do a great job, but, hey, we'll make a great case.
Is this something, are we doing in conjunction with putting through this grant, or will we have to wait to see how the grant turns out and then step forward? What are the time scales of plan of action?
I don't think the Public Service Commission is going to be, you know, considering whether you're paying for the other parts of it with grant money. They're just looking to look at whether the city pays or the utility pays. And a big factor in that will be any safety issues that are addressed. Once they're addressed, we'll have to, you know, take care of those regardless if there is a grant or anything. So that's why in the process, you don't want to identify those safety issues unless, you know, you don't want to do, get things out of order.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Because you may end up spending money and getting nothing for it, so.
Well, there are safety issues, which some people believe that there are, that should be addressed, no matter who's going to pay for them or how they're going to pay for them. And in my opinion, the beneficiaries of this improvement would be the community of Jefferson, whether we call it the taxpayers or the rate payers. I mean, there, with the exception of a few outliers that live, that provide, that are, receive services from Jefferson Utilities that are not taxpayers in the city of Jefferson. It's all the same pool of beneficiaries. So it's kind of a, it's going to cost, if we accept a face value, that it's going to cost a billion two to do this. How we divide that up is kind of not incidental, but it's, if we think it's worth, worth doing, we should figure out a way to do it. And if we have an opportunity to recoup more than half of those costs through this, this mechanism, it would seem to be good stewardship for the city to pursue that. But it's going to take a lot of work, and it can, and both Bruce and his company, and Scott and Shannon with Jefferson Utilities, as well as City of Jefferson, to work together on this to achieve this. It's not an easy goal, but I think hearing from everyone around the table here, that it's one that's worthwhile to pursue. So I guess we'll take that as a consensus, that we would like to move forward with this and make our best argument to the Public Service Commission on why this is a necessary and valid improvement, to like correct staff, to move forward with pre-engineering, and to move forward with the cost estimates. And that's kind of what we're hearing tonight. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay. So that's kind of, that's kind of what we were looking for tonight, is to kind of get everybody's opinion on this and to see if we was, um, valid to move forward. So we'll take that as a stance, and we'll put that in the minutes. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain the marks to do it, Judge.
The who?
Mr. Pichi.
Second.
Segue by Mr. Kross. All in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, Judge. Good evening. Thank you, Michael.